Thank you all for being here tonight. This is our July of seventeen Bowling Green, Warren County Planning Commission Meeting. And Matthew, if you would call the roll, please, sir.
Commissioner Bollinger? Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Here.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Matthew. Commissioners, in your packets, you had our minutes of our July the third meeting. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please, to approve.
Motion that prevents me from approving.
Second.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bollinger? I apologize. Commissioner Cassidy?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sissel?
Abstain.
Commissioner Drain?
Abstain.
Commissioner Gay?
Abstain.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Abstain.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Matthew. Commissioners, you have the subdivision and site development plans in our packets that were mailed to you. Are there any questions regarding those? Hearing none, they'll be approved as submitted. Megan, you're up next.
I've got a couple updates for you guys. First, we're going to start off with a quick review on how we closed out the fourth quarter of last year. If you look at your budget that you should have in the packet, we're going to just take a quick look at the percentage of budget. You'll notice in highlighted in green, our total income for last year, we closed out at one hundred and seven percent of what we anticipated. That's a good thing. We actually closed out last quarter a lot stronger than I thought we would. Our construction review fees ended up about fifty thousand dollars more than we thought we were going to. So when we met last time, anyway, I've been able to make a few budget changes for this fiscal year that we'll go over. If you flip over to the second page, you'll see that our expenses in green ended up being ninety-seven point six percent. That's exactly where we want them, just a little bit below one hundred percent. And I'll draw your attention to total NPO line item. It's eighty-nine point one percent. We actually didn't spend as much as we thought we would for NPO. That's another contributor to why our carryover amount ended up being much higher than what we expected it to be. So that's pretty much the budget update I've got for the fourth quarter. Before I move on to this year, are there any questions about last year?
Commissioners, any questions for Megan? All right.
Okay. Awesome. So we will move over to the yellow column on the budget. Line number one, I want to point out, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, that's exactly what we started off in the bank with so far, or at the beginning of this fiscal year. Line number five and number six, that's our NPO-related and our transit-related funds. Those line items actually increased. The reason for that is we had some projects that we were working on last fiscal year that we did not finish out. So we are carrying those forward to this year. So you're going to notice our income and our expenses, they're going to, both will be impacted by that. So, let's see. I think that's pretty much everything on the first page of the budget that we'll go over. If you want to flip over to the second page, lines number forty-eight and forty-nine, again, we're talking about NPO projects. Those lines have increased, again, because we are carrying forward those two projects and will pay for them in this fiscal year instead of last fiscal year. And then the great news that we've got, lines seventy-four through seventy-seven, those are the lines that we thought we might not be able to fund. Those are, let's see, our technology reserve, comp plan reserves, equipment. So we had pulled, not really pulled funds out, but we didn't add money to those last fiscal year because we were coming in kind of tight. But we actually closed out much stronger than thought, than we thought. So I was able to put the money in those accounts. Those are basically like our savings accounts that we have for vehicles, or the comp plan, or whatever we may need. That's pretty much all I've got on the budget for this year. Any questions on it?
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Peterson, anything you would like to add? Megan, you always do a good job, but just ask Mr. Peterson anything we need to...
You said it does a great job, and we're going to listen to this.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yep, you're welcome.
So this is information only, or do we need, we don't need a motion?
We do need to vote on it, yes.
Okay. Commissioners, you have the hearing budget and proposed budget for next year. We'll call for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved. Thank you all very much. Mr. Peterson, any old business for tonight? Okay. We will now enter into our public hearing, and Hamp, let's start with you, if you would administer the oath, please, sir.
Please order that the record for tonight include all statutory and regulatory provisions that govern these proceedings. Also, if you would direct that the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket be included, and along with the qualifications for each of the staff witnesses. And finally, if you would please administer the oath...
Thank you, Hamp. Everybody swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. For those in the audience tonight, you see the screen up here on the page up here on your screen. When we go through these public hearings, the staff will make a presentation regarding any cases we hear tonight. Then their applicant will also make a presentation. And then if anybody in the audience tonight has questions or opposition to that request, or they have an app, or they have someone that's representing them, they have fifteen minutes. But we will give each individual person here tonight three minutes to ask comments or questions on anything that is proposed. So that's our standard operating procedure. So thank you very much. Our first item tonight is twenty twenty-five oh five Flume Stagner Farms LLC, care of Renee Isaacs, has filed an application for a future land use map amendment for thirteen, approximately thirteen acres located on Elrod Road, approximately five hundred ninety-one feet southwest of Emerton Road from low density residential to moderate density residential. And this is a full board vote on this. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in April for the property you just referenced located on Elrod Road. This is the concept plan that was submitted with the application, and the applicants are proposing to amend the future land use map for roughly thirteen acres from low density residential to moderate density residential. And if the Flume amendment is successful, the applicant would later like to file an application to rezone the same area from RS one D to PUD in order to develop the site with a maximum of ninety-four single-family detached homes. This is the current aerial view of the property and the zoning map, which shows that current RS one D zoning, which was established back in twenty twenty-one. The current land use is agriculture, and the current future land use designation is low density residential. We have a few property photos we can flip back and forth through if we need to.
That's the Stagner Farms, the last one?
Yes. Those are existing homes in Stagner Farms. So this would be looking north, so the development would be on the east side behind this tree line, just to give you a point of reference there. We'll leave the concept up as we go through the staff report. In our review, we did find that the proposal was generally in agreement with LU one point one point four, which outlines the criteria required for amending the future land use map. That's listed on page two, and then bleeds over onto page three for your reference. We did find the proposal to be generally compatible with the area, but we did have a few items for your consideration. Those are noted at the bottom of page one, so I'm going to go through those one at a time. And the first one starts on page four. That's regarding the minimum lot size and minimum lot width that's proposed as a part of this development. The minimum lot size proposed is three thousand five hundred and thirty-five square feet, and the minimum lot width proposed is thirty-five feet. And the staff has noted that the proposed lot sizes and widths are not consistent with the current developments that are located on the southwest side of I one sixty-five. Going to jump over to page five, looking at natural features. We did note a mature line of trees that runs along the side and rear property lines. One of those was shown in that photo we were just looking at. The applicants did address tree preservation in their preliminary development plan conditions, but during the review process, staff suggested that the applicants include a measurable standard for tree preservation, as there is nothing defining what constitutes a reasonable effort that is mentioned in that development plan condition. And then we also suggested that the applicants consider a tree planting requirement for each new lot, similar to what was just approved for the development at the roundabout that you all heard just recently. Those items were left unaddressed. However, after speaking with the applicants, I believe that was an oversight, they may want to mention that here in just a bit. Next, jumping down to surrounding density. Within a thousand feet, we've noted that densities range from zero to eight point zero four dwelling units per acre, and that the average density is four point zero six dwelling units per acre. The current approved density for this development is three point zero seven dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density is seven point two two dwelling units per acre. And this doesn't comply with the recommended density increase outlined in HN one point two, which recommends a density increase of no more than fifty percent within a thousand-foot Next, looking at surrounding architectural features on that same page. The current development plan conditions for this property require a minimum home size of fourteen hundred square feet with a two-car attached garage. And the applicants are proposing that each single-family residence would be a minimum of one thousand fifty square feet exclusive of garages, and that no fewer than fifty percent of the structure shall have a minimum of twelve hundred square feet exclusive of garages. And the applicant is proposing a one-car attached garage minimum. These are not consistent with the current standards that are established for the property. They're less than the fourteen hundred square foot and two-car minimum that's established for the adjacent Stagner Farms development, and are not consistent with other developments located on the southwest side of I one sixty-five. I think that covers our items to consider on page one. And with that, our staff recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
Chair Warren, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I may be overlooking this in the write-up. Do you know what the average size of the homes are in the existing stagnant development?
The, I don't...
Square footage-wise?
I don't know the average of the homes that have been built to date, but I can tell you that the minimum that's required in their development plan conditions is fourteen hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And so, Rachel, I see, I think it's Chicory Way is behind this development, it looks like. And it looks like there's a bit more density there. Tell me, is that a part of, well, let me just ask the question, what am I looking at there?
On the backside, back here.
Yes.
That's the Springfield subdivision.
Okay.
If you're familiar with that, just to the southeast would be Three Springs Road, where the development would come back on that side.
And can, you may or may not be able to answer this, do you know what the square footage requirement is for that development?
There was actually, I looked in the development plan conditions, or the binding elements, and there wasn't anything listed. But I did do a quick snapshot of the homes that back up immediately, kind of on the south side here, just to kind of get a gauge for that. And those home sizes range from twelve hundred and fifty-seven square feet to twenty-one hundred and seventy-six square feet.
Okay. And do you know what the density is of that same area?
The, let's see, did make some notes on that, I believe. I didn't do the density specifically, I just did that thousand-foot snapshot. But if you're wondering where that eight point zero four is coming from, there are some twin homes in this RM three-zoned area there, and that's that higher density that's popping out in that calculation.
You're going exactly where I was wondering. I was trying to figure out where that number's coming from. Okay, very good. And then, lastly, do you know what the architectural features are for those homes? Are they all vinyl? Are they brick? Or what do we typically see?
Let me see here. I don't think we evaluated that, because the, let's see. I didn't look at that. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I did note what's current for this development, and it seemed to be fairly consistent, if not complementary, to what was there. So we didn't point that out as a concern, so I didn't do a deep dive into what was next door.
That's okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? All right, hearing none. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Good evening, Chair Warren. Chris Davenport, nine twenty-one College Street, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening to the rest of the commissioners as well. I'm here on behalf of Stagner Farms LLC. We call this Stagner Two. As Chair pointed out, this is next door to what we called Stagner One. So this is about thirteen acres. I think Stagner One's like eighty-five acres. It's the bigger parcel of the two portions. This tract's about thirteen acres. Ms. Renee Isaacs is with me as well tonight, if that's necessary. Of course, this is a Flume hearing, so we've already talked about some of the DPCs, and I'm sure we'll all talk some more about that, even though that if the Flume is successful, you know, there would be presumably another hearing that those DPCs would get ironed out and locked in. That being said, staff always likes us to file those with the Flume, so y'all can have some idea of what's being proposed here, and you don't learn about it later having already done the Flume. So that's kind of where we're at on this. We are requesting moderate density. I know the staff report kind of draws this demarcation line with the nature. I did want to point out to you all, though, as you've already hit on, that that eight, that eight point O density is actually this side of the nature. It's what you're seeing in the red, as Ms. Hurt pointed out. I also wanted to point out to you that, from a Flume perspective, and I guess I skipped over it. Yeah, it's right here. The GIS map that the city staff has, that the whole public can use, has some really cool tools on it. One of them's a measuring tool. And when I looked at this development where we're at, we are two hundred and sixty yards away from all that moderate density that you see kind of in that peach color. To give you an idea of how close that is to this property, it's literally a par three, a healthy par three, but it's a par three away from where we're standing here on this property. You'll note that when you get to the moderate density, there is an extreme amount of it in this vicinity, a lot of it. What's interesting is, this, that eight point O density is on here as low density. The only reason that is, is as I was talking with Ms. Hurt today, she answered this question for me, the Springfield, when it was rezoned, and you have an idea how old it is, because those aren't development conditions or bonding elements. That was way back, I think in the early two thousands, maybe the late nineties. It was before we had a Flume. If we were to, I guess, tag and color that area with what its Flume compliance is, it would also be moderate density. Obviously, eight point O was higher than the seven point two that we're asking for. That property is only one street away from us. I did not measure it, but I dare say that's probably a hundred yards from the corner of our property. And again, I'm talking about this, this area right in here. If you have any questions about what the purple is, I believe those are self-storage units that were put in maybe ten years ago. So we think that the moderate density is not untoward in this area. It's very close in proximity to an extensive amount that already exists. In this case, we had a CDR, which is the Construction Design Review Meeting with all the key players. As your staff report will point out, no roadway improvements will be necessary if this Flume is successful. That is because the Stagner Two, as we call it, will continue to be served through Stagner One. There'll be no additional access points on Elrod Road that would change anything from a traffic standpoint. The county and the state had no concerns, requested no traffic improvements should this move forward. Likewise, all the utilities, found the utilities to be sufficient in the area, that would be the electric, the water, and the sewer. So I think coupled with all that probably gives you some explanation why the staff is recommending approval for this. Of course, they are suggesting that we talk a little bit about the density, which we have. Couple things I want to point out. H one one point two, that is the policy that Ms. Rachel Hurt has talked about that says we, that argues against more than a fifty percent increase in the density of the area. We've talked a little bit about that calculation in recent meetings, and how that comes about. I would like to clarify one thing with Ms. Hurt, if I may, Chair. I've got a couple of questions for her on that.
Go ahead.
Rachel, so my understanding is, the way you all interpret that provision is you look at all, you look at the areas within a thousand feet, right?
Yes.
And then you find the range of the densities within that thousand feet.
Right. The minimum and the maximum, and then the average.
And then the average is the mathematical average of the least dense and the most dense, is that right?
It's just the total density divided by the number of properties that were within that thousand-foot radius.
In this case, and when you do that, do you agree that that average, I guess I'll use the term skewed, but it can be, I guess I'll use, it is affected by vacant parcels, isn't it?
It would be affected by, not necessarily, like, we're looking at the land use map now, so those vacant parcels in the existing Stagner Farms development would have been included because we know there's going to be a home on each of those lots. But for the vacant ag parcels, or the ag parcels that might have one home on forty acres, that is factored into that density.
So that might be areas like this, or like this?
Right.
Okay. In this case, the requested density is only slightly above that point, or that fifty percent increase. Is that a fair statement?
The recommended density, if you follow the fifty percent recommendation, would be six point oh nine maximum, and you're at seven point two.
Yeah. So I guess it depends on how you would define slightly.
Right.
All right. A couple policies, commissioners, that I want to point out that I think are also worth discussing here, that honestly, I didn't check to see, they may be reflected in the staff report, they may not, but as you all are aware, you know, all the policies that you have in your zoning ordinance are important. You often weigh one against the other, or two against two, wherever the case may be. We've talked about HN one. I would also point out HN two, which encourages diversity in housing types and housing stock. And I primarily want to point out HN four, which quote, "encourages an array of housing options in all parts of Warren County." I think that's very significant here, as well as HN five, which quote, "ensures that housing stock is affordable to all segments of the current and future population." So if you look at four and two, or HN two, HN four, and HN five, the question becomes, how do you really balance all that? And I'm going to suggest to you, this is a really good way to balance it. And the reason for that is, number one, this is a tract, which is going to create no new ingress egress points upon Elrod Road. That's been an issue out there. That's not going to be an issue with this development. And you're diversifying the densities, and I would point out, HN five specifically says, or excuse me, HN four point one specifically says that we should be offering increased density for developments to include a mix of housing types and densities within the development. So it's not just, we want different housing types, and we want different densities. HN four point one encourages it within developments. And that's essentially what this request is. Stagner One, there's no request to change it. It is building out. It has a lower density than what Stagner Two would be. So I think if this passes, we're certainly furthering HN four as well as HN five. Now, I don't usually like to talk about development conditions in Flume hearings, but it's already been brought up, and I think this commission has some thoughts about it, so let me just address a few things. Commissioner Graham?
Chris, you've got about four more minutes.
Yes, sir. Yep. Chicory Way. Your question was, what type houses are on that? My client's been out there and looked, okay? There is one house on Chicory Way that's completely vinyl. The remaining homes on Chicory Way have a brick frontage, and the rest are vinyl.
Thank you.
Okay? We also know that the Chicory Way homes, I think Rachel said, about twelve hundred square foot, some of them. I think that, you know, again, is not far off of what we're asking for. The last thing I want to point out, Matthew, how can I bring those pictures up?
Well, Chicory Way, the staff report was twelve hundred to twenty-one hundred square feet.
Correct. The lowest there is twelve hundred.
Right.
Right there? Okay. These are the homes along Stagner One and the property line in common with the property today, if you follow what I'm saying. The property today would be to the rear of these homes, would be the property line that we're talking about. The current development conditions in Stagner One, it's a little bit odd, it says forty percent of the homes, and vinyl's allowed in Stagner One, and it says forty percent of the homes will have at least seventy percent brick or masonry. Now, the converse of that means sixty percent of the homes in Stagner could be completely vinyl, no questions asked. There's a couple of things I want to point out with these pictures. And how do I go to the next one, Matthew? I'm sorry that...
You should do the...
The first thing I want to point out, this siding you see is vinyl. You'll see no completely brick homes along that property line, number one. Number two, you see how these homes, some of them have a brick on the front, but vinyl on the sides? The significance to that, to me, is those homes do nothing to satisfy the forty percent of homes that are supposed and have to be seventy percent brick. What you're looking at are homes that could be a hundred percent vinyl, but the market demanded and wanted, and the owners wanted and bought homes that had some masonry. The significance of that, to me, is for years, we've been talking about this, and the assumption's always been, if we allow a developer to build sixty percent... The first thing I want to point out, this siding you see is vinyl. You'll see no completely brick homes along that property line, number one. Number two, you see how these homes, some of them have a brick on the front, but vinyl on the sides? The significance to that to me is, those homes do nothing to satisfy the 40% of homes that are supposed and have to be 70% brick. What you're looking at are homes that could be 100% vinyl, but the market demanded and wanted, and the owners wanted and bought homes that had some masonry. The significance of that to me is, for years, we've been talking about this, and the assumption's always been, if we allow a developer to build 60% homes that have to have no brick or masonry involved, those homes, I think there's a jump to assume that they're going to be all vinyl. This is the proof in the pudding that that's not what happens. That is the street and the property line in common with our property. And again, I'm not one, if this flume is successful, my client will have to come back and these development conditions will be discussed, square footage will be discussed, materials will be discussed. That is when they'll have to bind themselves, and you will bind them to those conditions. But if there's any reservation tonight about changing this flume because of conditions, that's why I wanted to bring these pictures tonight. The conditions that we've put forth, if this goes forward, will be extremely consistent with what you're looking at here. I'm welcome to answer any questions y'all have. I know I'm probably out of time at this point.
Yes, sir, you are. And no disrespect, Chris, because you could talk for another 30 minutes.
It's occupational hazard, Chair.
Any questions for Mr. Davenport?
So, this is one that I always get tripped up here.
Yes, sir.
You know, essentially, we're asking for two things here. The two big things we're asking for are density and square footage.
Yes.
And, and probably secondary to that is going to be what is, what is the, what are the architectural elements? And so, how much of that do we consider at this hearing? Would I take higher density and more attractive homes? Sure. But I'm not sure I get to pick that together because of the way we, we put this, you know, the way we segment this.
I would say this, Commissioner Graham, if the flume is successful, we still have not been granted 94 units.
Right.
That's still a development condition that has to be a part of the zoning.
And the building materials.
And the building materials.
And the square footage.
And the square footage. And that's why I'm really hesitant to discuss those things that are flumed. But, but the, you know, the practical person, he says, I know y'all are thinking about these things, and I'm remiss if I don't address them and explain why I think these things are reasonable. I could tell you, this is the same conditions down the road that we did a month ago. I don't think that's that important yet, frankly. I think that comes about if I come back.
So let me ask this.
I think that that's exactly what we're supposed to be looking at under criteria number three.
Well, I, I think that's why the commissioner, the staff want me to do that, okay? And that's why I'm happy to answer all the questions y'all have about that.
As far as the square footage, you're only talking about 150 square foot difference. Is that correct?
No, it's actually...
The current is 1,400.
1,400, okay, sorry.
It's, I think the math you're doing, Commissioner Gay, is those homes along the back.
It is. So 350, I mean, it still is not that significant of a difference. It's not like we're building 5,000 square foot homes and 1,400 square foot homes, huh?
I would concur with that.
Another thing, I know the staff has been working to get this application error-free, but I do want to point out our development, but it should number two, it still has the inconsistency that they noted in their staff comments about whether this was inclusive and exclusive of the villages.
Well, I know, Commissioner Sisal, I noted that. Frankly, I thought that had been rectified.
Yeah, I know it's been worked on. I just want to point out.
We also had an issue about a dog court versus a dog park that we couldn't, it just kept popping up. Rachel and I discussed that. Clearly, it's a dog park. That's the intent.
So maybe this is a question for staff. What are we approving if we just do the flume tonight? Because clearly, there's going to be quite the discussion about...
What are you asking, Tim?
What are we approving if we...
All we're approving, all we're doing tonight is density.
Yeah.
A flume change. We're not getting into the materials, the size, we're not getting into the DPCs.
Yeah.
I mean, they've laid out a, I would say they've laid out a, a game plan or something that they're going to come back and ask for. But I think if I remember correctly, in the last one, they laid some stuff out and they made some modifications, and, and we talked about it. I mean, to me, on a flume hearing, I mean, I'm glad they've kind of laid it out for us so we can see a little bit of it, but that's really not for discussion tonight. It's more of a density.
All we're doing tonight is approving the future land use map, and then they, as you said, Mr. Volker, they come back with their final, semifinal proposal. Is that correct, Mr. Davenport?
That's right. And I don't want a short shrift of work that we do with staff. In the meantime, to get these conditions in front of you. There's work done on those too. I could go into how they've changed to get here tonight. That's, I think that's superfluous, frankly, though.
So you come back, if this, if the flume is approved, you all come back with a recommend or proposal, and then it's up to this board to decide square footage, density?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah.
But again, looking at criteria number three, if you look at it point by point, all of this he's putting forth is part of the consideration. I mean, the specifics would get decided later, but you have to include the building materials, the building height, the location, the bulk with the other structures. That's what we're talking about.
But really, we shouldn't be. I mean, because it's, I mean, they've laid out a game plan of what they're talking about. But the next concept would be the specifics. So, I mean, so, I mean, no offense, but that's the next meeting.
But this is our comprehensive plan. This is our guide for making the decision.
Well, it's a guide for, it's a density guide. I mean, they're here tonight just on density.
Density is within this criteria. It's there, but it's listed with everything else that's been discussed here.
So let me play devil's advocate here, because this has always intrigued me. How do I consider that if I don't know what it is? They haven't committed to anything yet.
Well, they're not obligated to even put it in there.
Right.
It's what she already said.
That's the hard, that's the puzzling part of this for me. Yeah, please.
So they are obligated, as Commissioner Sisal has stated, if you look on page three of your staff report, that outlines the criteria or the burden of proof that the applicant must provide for you to amend the future land use map. And so you'll see under criteria three, all of those topics, including the, sorry, I lost my spot where I was reading. Oh, sorry.
Compatible.
It's on page, page two, number three, where there is a compatibility assessment, as demonstrated by the applicant, and it goes through all those different topics, which includes density, but it also includes building materials, intensity of use, bulk and bulk of buildings and other structures. And so I think those are all fair things for you to consider as a part of your review. I understand that the future land use map, if you read the descriptions, it's really only talking about a density range and the different housing types that may be appropriate in a particular category. But under the criteria on the bottom of page two, listed in number three, those are all things that you can very fairly consider as a part of your review. And I understand they're not locked in as a, as a part of a development plan condition at this point.
That's what I was meaning, is...
But, but I do think that if, those are topics for discussion. So if you're adamant about a particular thing, whether that be a home size or a material, or lot widths or density, tonight's where you discuss that, with a reasonable expectation if this were to be approved, that when they come back in the next step in the process, that you could reasonably expect the conditions to reflect what was discussed during the meeting tonight.
But they're not binding.
Not tonight, no.
I mean, so to me, I mean, I get it, and I understand why they put it in there. I think it's good to see it. And, I mean, and especially since the fact we had something almost identical to this two weeks ago, a month ago, whatever it was. So, you know, we've had one good discussion on it, so I think that's good. But the other point that I, that I make in looking at this is, I mean, you guys are recommending approval. So to me, I mean, it's good that we read of this, we discuss it, but...
Well, the staff's recommending approval, but they're recommending it on contention of what...
Right, pending discussion and testimony from, from anyone in the audience, or discussion amongst yourselves, or what the applicant's provided as a part of their testimony.
If I might, I would like to come back when I have these cases and the flumes passed, and come back at a zoning hearing and say, you've already voted for this, and you're obligated to vote for it again. I never say that, because that's not factually true.
Well, that's not, yeah.
It's not, it's not true.
We could deny it.
Some of you could say, I want to vote for the moderate density. It's reasonable. It's not moderate density residential, it's not incompatible with low-density residential necessarily. It's not a commercial flume or industrial flume, you know? But some of you may say, that's compatible as is. Some of you may say it's conceivably compatible, but we need to work on the zoning. Maybe there's something you want to see at the zoning hearing, condition-wise. So I never say you're locked in because you're not locked in. To me, the debate right now is, is it such that moderate density residential, period, in any form, is incompatible with what's there? And I would say no, because even the Springfield, the next street over has densities that are moderate density by definition. 260 yards away is numerous subdivisions that are flumed moderate density. The discussion becomes, at my opinion, at the zoning hearing, how exactly what this property looks like, condition-wise, once it does have a lot of density, frankly. That's, that's what I would suggest to you. But that's, that's simply my, my suggestion.
So let me pose the question this way, and Hamp, I want you to weigh in here as well. Seems like what they're asking me is this. Tim, is there any condition with these homes that you would, you would approve this subdivision? If they did exactly what you want, they built it to the size you want, they put the architectural elements that you want, would you approve this? Am I wrong about what I'm considering here?
No, sir. I think that's exactly what, that is a consensus of what the discussion is, that you can say tonight, Mr. Davenport, I'm going to vote to amend the flume to moderate density. But I'm telling you, unless you come back with square footage, exterior treatment, number of units that are A, B, and C, you're not going to get my vote.
And so it's okay for, for me to go ahead and, and basically let, let the applicant know, I'm weighing one against the other, but I'm going to give you the opportunity to move to the next step, but there's a big discussion to have at the next step.
And you're not bound by that impression, but you merely explained the reasons for voting for the flume.
Fair enough. These are always tough for me. What, exactly what are we supposed to consider?
Ms. Sisal...
I think she brings up a bound one.
She does. I mean, she just read, read to us from the...
It just seems inconsistent to me that I can consider something that I don't, that I don't know. I don't know what that's going to be until I know what that is, right?
There was a time we did these hearings basically at the same time. That was a few, we quit doing that for very good reason.
Right. That has its own set of problems.
It has its own set of problems. Sure does. Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Davenport, representing the applicant? Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has a question regarding this request? Yes, ma'am?
But I don't know, I should wait till the end.
Well, no, ma'am. We're...
We're at the end now.
Yes, if you'd come to the microphone, please, and state your name, your name and address, please.
Camilla Simpson, 1235 Chicory Way.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Simpson, you swear to the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
And I came with a request, and after listening to Mr. Davenport, I have calmed down a little. But I, I thought you may think my request was a little silly. I'm going to go ahead and say that request, and then I'm probably going to get sillier. I live at...
You've got three minutes, so you...
Right. Live at lot 383 Chicory Way, or it's 1235 Chicory Way, lot 383, which is smack dab in the middle of the proposed property between the Springfield and, that's my white vinyl house. Mr. Davenport, I take, you know, you all talk about affordable housing. That house was affordable to me. I know nobody's going to take that house away from me. I love my little white vinyl house. You need to be concerned with what you're building in your, in your subdivision. Leave Chicory Way.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, let's, let's...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't talk to Mr. Davenport, talk to the commissioners.
I'm sorry. But I hope you all can understand how I feel. I feel personally attacked, which I know I'm not. I know he's just trying to get the specifics for, for his building lots and, and do what's in the neighborhoods. But it, it, it just makes me livid. So anyway, my, my initial request was, we are an established subdivision, and my request was going to be that my backyard is my little piece of heaven, and that I would request that when they do think about, when the developer thinks about building, if they would please think about just doing one-story houses on the back lots, just so I don't have to go out to my little piece of heaven and have to have somebody looking down over me. Now, there are, there are trees there. Those trees are not going to be there forever. They are mature trees. They're going to fall, and they're going to fall on the houses. They really need to be, to come down and something else better put up. And that's, that's about all I had to say until, I'm sorry, I got a little upset there.
It's okay.
I do have a couple of things that have nothing to do with this. Street parking on the subdivisions, all the subdivisions. I think as, as a person who lives in a place where street parking is allowed, the streets should have to be half as big again, so you can get through the streets. It's just really hard sometimes to maneuver down the street when there's cars on both sides, and you've only got one lane, and there's cars coming in both directions. And also, apartment complexes in this town are going up every week, the whole, the whole, not foundation, but all the studs and, I think that in apartment complexes, at least one complex should have a basement, to where if there, if there's a storm, everybody could go to that basement. And the, the room could be used for other things, meeting rooms, game rooms, or whatever. But I feel like they should be, there should be a, a place for people to go in bad weather.
Well, I think they will address the street parking when they come back, if this, if this amendment's approved.
And I know Stagner Farms is really good about not having street parking.
Okay. We will address that. And as far as the apartments, we can't do anything about that. That's, that's up to everybody else. And, go ahead.
And I understand that, but I think that should be like a state or a national rule.
Okay, all right.
But I'm sorry for my outburst, but I'm just a little passionate here.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else has commented something different than what Ms. Simpson has voiced? All right. So commissioners, this is a flume amendment, and then they will come back with their approval?
I need to ask Rachel a question, please. Whenever you go to your presentation, you mentioned there were some things in the application that weren't addressed, but there was an oversight, and maybe the applicant would be addressing those. Remind me what those were, please. It was a preservation of the tree buffer on the perimeter, and then a new tree planting requirement for each of the lots. So does the applicant want to address those, like Rachel mentioned, if you would do that?
Yes, Mr. Sisal. I called Rachel this afternoon and said, if this is successful, that DPC will be amended to include at least the two trees every lot prior to an issue of a certificate of occupancy.
And preserve the best you can.
Yeah. We're going to have to tweak that some. Because of the lot sizes, the typical do-not-disturb buffer may not be doable, but it's going to get addressed. Since I'm here, I appreciate the comments Ms. Simpson made, and there was no intention to...
And I realize that.
I really appreciate your sentiment, because it echoes kind of my sentiment in a way. Thank you all.
Thank you. Staff, or commissioners, any other questions? So we are, we are tonight only voting on the flume amendment, and then the applicants will come back with a more detailed concept plan. So we'll call for motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment. Document number 2025Z5 flume, based upon a testimony and document presented in this public hearing and proposal. Flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. I further request this motion to include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Say it.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
No.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir.
The motion's approved, and this plan, commission final action, they will be back here in a few months, whenever. Our next item tonight, do it. Whenever they come back, that's what I said. Yeah, I didn't mean it the wrong way. 2025-06 Flume, Jolene Properties LLC, care of Karen Ramsey, have filed an application for a future land use map amendment for almost approximately half acres located at 1202 NAM Drive, from low-density residential to moderate-density residential. Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back on April the 3rd for the property at 1202 NAM Drive, and the applicant is proposing to amend the future land use map from low-density residential to moderate-density residential. And if the future land use map amendment is successful, the applicant would later come back to rezone the property from RS 1A to RS 1D in order to reconfigure the current property boundary for a smaller building lot. And the proposed lot configuration is shown on this exhibit. This is the aerial view for the property and the current zoning, which is RS 1A, and the current land use is single-family. This is the future land use map, which currently shows the property being designated as low-density residential. And we have a few photos of the property and of the neighborhood that we can reference And then I'll leave the concept plan up as we review the staff report. In looking at all of the criteria that we assessed in the review process, we found that the proposed flume amendment was generally in agreement with LU 114 and generally compatible with the surrounding area. We did have one item for your consideration, and that's on page four, looking at cultural or historical features. We've noted that the current home was constructed in 1961, though it is not a locally or nationally designated historic property. Staff suggested that the applicants consider a requirement that in the event the existing residence is ever demolished, that salvageable materials be made available to Habitat for Humanity Restore or similar nonprofit organization, and that the structure would be made available to local fire departments for training purposes. We've seen that with other applications before, and, and we just made that as a suggestion, and it wasn't addressed. So that was really the only thing we wanted to note. Other than that, our staff recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Commissioners, any questions for Rachel?
Is this on sear?
It, it would be, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant hearing anything you'd like to add?
No.
Nothing to add? Okay. All right, thank you so much. So is anyone in the audience tonight has opposition to this request? All right. Commissioners, we call for motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 2025-06 Flume. Based on the testimonies and documents presented at the public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Say it.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Motion is approved, and this plan, commission final action. Our next item tonight is 2025-11 DP, 4G Investments LLC, care of Nick Goldie, has filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions for one acre, approximately one acre, located at 8233 Nashville Road. This property subject to application is of general business. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting for the property on Nashville Road back in June. Current zoning of the property is general business. Current land use is commercial. And then the future land use map designation is mixed-use residential. And then here are some photos of the property as it is now, and they are also in your packets. And then here is their original site plan for the property. So they are proposing to amend the development plan for the property at 8233 Nashville Road. The main purpose of the application is to revise the development plan conditions to allow flexibility for alcohol sales. And then the specific changes are detailed on page three, and we can go through those if you all have any questions. Just for some context, the area subject to the development plan was rezoned to general business in July of 2012. And so looking down to the bottom of page one, the proposal does comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. And so staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion tonight. And that's all that I have, but I'm happy to answer your questions or look at anything in specifics.
Thank you, Jenny. Commissioners, any questions?
So just to make sure I understand, this is a restaurant, and they just, they want to allow alcohol sales, correct?
Correct. That's the primary reasoning behind their amendment.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Is the applicant hearing anything you'd like to add?
I'm here, but, and I can answer any questions, but I don't have...
We just want to know if you're going to sell the tenderloin sandwiches.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goldie. Goldie, is that correct?
Is that right?
All right. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has opposition to this request? So, hearing none. Commissioners, we call for motion, please.
Make a motion to approve a proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 2025-11 DP. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Furthermore, I find that there has been major changes in economic and physical and social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request that the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Say it.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion's approved, and this plan, commission final action. Our next item tonight is 2025-12 DP, the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated has filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions, 273 acres located along Prosperity Lane, Commonwealth Boulevard, Jody Richards Road, and Technology Way. The property subject to this application's on highway, heavy industrial, excuse me. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting for all the properties outlined in March of this year. Current zoning is heavy industrial. Current land use is a mixture of agricultural, public, industrial, and vacant. And then the future land use map designation is also industrial. Here are some images. And those are also available in your packet. And then this is the area subject to the development plan amendment. And so they are proposing to amend the development plan for the purposes of revising the restrictions on access to Ms. Powell Road specifically for a proposed cell tower lot and, and an existing water tower lot. And so those specific changes are detailed on page four and are development plan condition 11B. The properties, the properties subject to the development plan amendment were rezoned from ag to heavy industrial in 2004. And so looking down to the bottom of page one, the proposal does comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. And with that, staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion of those items. And that's all that I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for this, for the ITA? All right. Mr. Penn, anything you'd like to add?
Other than we need cellphone service out there.
If you're going to talk, you need to swear yourself in.
Gaines, Penn, 1101 College Street, I swear.
And you swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
The genesis of this is just to add a little access, or to be able to access the cellphone tower. Happy to answer any questions.
So that's essentially what's driving it, then, is just to get that, get you a cellphone tower out there.
Drop calls.
Yeah, 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 I get it. I get it.
And, and the Water District needs to be able to legitimately go down that Ms. Powell Road to get to their water tower.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Penn.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, there's no question that anybody in the audience tonight has a question. Mr. Story? All right. Hearing none. We call for motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 2025-12 DP. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes to an economic, fiscal, and social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request that the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Say it.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion's approved, plan, commission, final action. Mr. Peterson, any other items?
Just have a couple of things I'll mention. So we wanted to let you know that we are, our staff, as well as the city and the county Public Works and Stormwater staff are still working through assessing what we need to do with the car flooding and how we're going to handle that moving forward in the future. We do have the outline of a plan. We expect to have some presentations very soon for you all and in the public. Within the next couple of weeks to a month, we do anticipate having a subdivision regulations amendment. We had our next board meeting, which I believe is in September. Another thing we're working on is several zoning ordinance text changes. There's been some recent state law changes that are going to, maybe for lack of a better term, force us to look at some things concerning manufactured homes. And we'll also, of course, take that opportunity to look at some of our other housekeeping items, as well as modernize a little bit of our zoning ordinance as far as some terms goes. We're going to have to look at some things concerning data centers and solar farms and freestanding birthing centers and verterports and air taxis. So we don't mind cars. We're moving, moving towards that way, right? So we're going to look at all those things. That'll probably, it won't be till spring before we address those zoning ordinance changes, but I just wanted to let you all know we are looking at those, at those things. The last piece is just more of a comment that our air conditioning has been out for about four weeks now, operating at about 40%, and we're the lucky ones in our building. So they are working on it, and we're really hoping they have it done in time for us to go home for the weekend, so, in this outlook. They're supposed to have it done today, but they were also supposed to have it done last week, too, so we'll just, we're still, still dealing with that, but...
From a logistics standpoint, do we have any leverage with our landlord?
Our air conditioning is, I'd say it's been on the edge of bearable. Times has been some, a little bit unbearable, but it's okay for now. We do have leverage. It is in our lease that the air conditioning has to be working within two degrees of the set point, however, you know, when things break and you can't get parts for whatever reason, and I'll just leave it at that.
Well, it's older equipment.